I think it's red because it's too close.
It's haunted my mucus.
Chris, yes now. All right, reports.
None.
Uh liquor, prohibited payroll. That wasn't a payroll.
No payroll.
Hey liquor license. Uh Northwood Country Club. Take a motion to approve the, I'll motion approve Northwood Country Club liquor license.
I'll second that.
Okay, we can second it. Liquor discretion, uh all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both in time. All right, Mark.
Good morning. Um last week, I sent you the email with kind of an explanation of why we're looking at doing some EMA volunteers for supporting our mission and then just the draft application and the policy that we've worked out so far. Um and those both have been looked at by the county attorney and the ICAP risk management personnel. Stuff like that, I guess. Any questions that you guys have on that process so far? And so I'm just kind of here to let you guys know that we are doing it and why. The stuff if you have anything and I guess going forward, if you mean if you think of anything later, if you don't have any questions about it now or anything like that, just convey those to Enos. He's, you know, your representative on the commission and you can bring that to our meeting. You can bring it to me sooner than that too, obviously. You don't have to wait for him and stuff like that. But uh and then ironically, I did see, and I think I forwarded that to you guys too, later in the week. Uh Woodbury County is looking to, it sounded like they maybe have support people positions already and they're looking to either bolster or increase those or backfill them or whatever. They kind of have not quite sure on their program. But uh they're looking to add people to that staff too. There's something they have different, you know, like people that work maybe in like in their DOC positions and then also like field operations too. So similar to what we would be looking for here down the road.
I kind of have some sort of backup plan to.
Right.
Because you being a lone wolf on a lot of it. I know neighbors, neighboring counties can help, but that's one of those situations where they have issues too. You know, if if we get a storm that takes out three counties, who are we gonna ask for help?
Derachel's seem to be a favorite thing that the weather throws at us now and Derachel's by, well, by definition, they're never one, one county bay. They're, they're usually go across the state, so.
Yeah.
And just for a little information, we are in our district and it's very preliminary right now, but we're trying to stand up or train up our, an incident management team that would consist of um the eighteen counties in our district. And there's because of, when available Hancock, they, they have one director for both counties. But so it'd be about sixteen other people that are trained in positions in the incident management scenario that could come in and help run your DOC or your incident basically for you for extended periods of time. Because, you know, you would have backup positions, you know, and so. Going twenty-four seven for more than a couple of days is, is not possible for one person. So but then again, you know, you bring those people in and yeah, they can run your, the incident management team, but to actually be boots on the ground in your county, know your county, know your equipment and be actually there to refuel the generators and that kind of stuff. Or be manning babies of the generators and, and the command trailers and do all that kind of stuff. It takes people that are from the county that know the county and have worked with that equipment before to do that, so.
Oh my, it's a great idea.
So are you looking for, you looking for a position or you just informing us of the track?
Just letting you know about it. You forgot to mention that. I don't, I don't think it's, it's not a bad idea, especially a volunteer type team.
You'd have the names and numbers of who to contact.
Yep.
Or they already know what's going on and still is trying to find something after something hits.
Right, yeah, it's a lot easier to, to have the list available and, and have their, their knowledge base increased and, you know. Being proactive rather than reactive. That's the whole name of the game in this situation.
Oh, the good part is probably have training and a couple of times I've been on with you and previous director, you know, things really went well, maybe as volunteers there and now, but it doesn't hurt to have some training if they're willing to do it.
And, you know, liken it to a volunteer fire department. You don't go, when the fire call goes out, you don't go around town looking for people to, to join the fire department at that time.
A little late, yeah.
Yeah, it happens in places ahead of time, so.
Sounds good to me, okay.
And then the other, our, 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 the Worth County Hazard Mitigation Plan, the multiple jurisdiction law, finally reached the end zone and got that FEMA approval after several years of working on it from first meetings till now. Let's go with our vendor.
All right, Worth County Multiple Jurisdiction Mitigation Plan Adoption Resolution. Whereas Worth County recognizes the threat that natural and human cause hazards posed to people and property within our community and whereas undertaking hazardous mitigation action will reduce the potential for harm to the people, property from future hazardous occurrences and where as adopted hazardous mitigation plan is required as a condition of future funding for the mitigation projects under multiple FEMA pre and post disaster mitigation grant programs. And whereas Worth County residents within the planning area have participated in the mitigation planning process to prepare the hazardous mitigation plan and whereas Iowa Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management and Federal Emergency Management Agencies Region Seven, officials have received the Worth County Hazardous Mitigation Plan and approved its contingency upon the official adoption of the participating government body. And now therefore be resolved, the Worth County Board of Supervisors hereby adopt the Worth County Hazardous Mitigation Plan as an official plan and be further resolved. Worth County EMA will submit the adopted resolution to the Iowa Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management and Federal Emergency Management Agencies Region Seven. Officials enable the plan's final approval. I will take a motion to adopt the twenty-five, twenty twenty five Worth County Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
I'm like a motion. I'll second that motion.
Move in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call, Lord.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
It's maybe aye. The resolution will be duly adopted. Okay, thanks Mark.
Okay.
Anything else?
None of this, Jeff.
All right.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, it's not nine o'clock. We'll take, set a date for those twenty-five, twenty-six property tax levy, public care in March twenty-fourth at ten a.m.
I'll motion approve the, set the public care date for twenty twenty-six property tax levy. Is there a second?
Second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both in time, motion care. Okay, FY twenty twenty-four pilot waiver requests North Iowa Region Housing Authority.
Something to do every year is.
Yeah.
Annual. We have to bait those taxes.
Yep.
So they can take that money and put it into repairs.
Okay.
And upkeep or lower income.
Yep.
If we have one in Manlin, one in Northland.
Okay. I'll motion approve the pilot waiver request.
I'll second that.
Okay, move in a second, accept the pilot waiver request. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both in time, motion care.
Give you a light, one above your head if you.
Here, in the dark. Okay, uh Conservation Building Reminding Project Resolution twenty twenty-five oh nine, approving twenty-three.
I emailed a resolution to Jack Eefel, contract and bond.
Good.
Finally did receive those back from Kingland Construction, actually about seven thirty this morning. So I do have the originals of the contracts. Um standard construction agreement, construction cost was five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um it's a lump sum contract and as far as the bond goes, it's a two-year performance payment maintenance bond, so. Uh just got a message from, thinking about thirty days out for starting here. So I don't have a list of subcontractors yet. Once he has a contract, he'll likely give me that list of subcontractors. We'll schedule a pre-count with Jim and let him know when it's time to start moving stuff out. Questions on this as a procedural for make the full file up for a warrant or a proven contract and bond.
I'll motion approve the, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five oh nine for contract and bond of conservation building.
Okay, so. I'll second that.
Move in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call, Lord.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
It's maybe aye. The resolution. It's three, I just see it's. Something else too? You studied that all over the camera, did you?
Yep, got it all down.
Sign three of them.
Yep.
Okay. Good. All right, water and sewer rates.
So I sent this out Friday. Um I'm just gonna, I guess ordinance wise, this is your same ordinance that you have. You have a retype, you put in updated proposed rates. Um for comparison purposes, we also put what the old ordinance was or what, what they were getting billed anyways. Not necessarily what the old ordinance was, so. Um as far as water rates, looking at a seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollar increase for the total system out there. Um and then upping the commodity charge and actually reducing slightly the capital improvement fee. Those are paid per thousand gallons. This is. It's all yours. Um sewer is the biggest change. I did put together this spreadsheet. This probably is gonna mean the most to everybody as far as how is this gonna impact all the businesses out there? Um the top group, June of twenty twenty-four, that's what their invoices were last June. And then I copied it and put in the proposed rate. Um we calculated what their bill would be for June at the new rate. So you'll see Diamond Joe's seen about a twenty percent increase. Worth County Hospitality, which is the casino, the hotel, the casino owners, that's the biggest rate increase. Uh sixty-three percent. Northwood Hospitality, the Holiday Inn Express, that's a hundred or eleven percent increase. And then Commonwealth's a hundred and five percent increase actually. Now that we've actually got three years worth of data to use to calculate their flows out there. Um as far as split water wise, just about identical to what it was before. Like I said in my email, though, sewer is the biggest increase. Sewer is one you've been seeing in your budget's been coming up short. And that was, if I remember right, about a sixty percent increase that we had there um on the sewer. So the bills are calculated three ways, with three components, the same as it was before. You have the commodity or the manual monthly charge, that just covers your, your expenses that are the same every month. You have your commodity charge, which is um basically the more you use, you get, you get billed on per thousand gallons and that's for some of the variable items out there. As far as costs go, the only thing I used in the commodity charge was the Heartland Power Electric invoice. So other than that, I put um everything on the minimum base charge or the capital improvement fee. There were, I did go through all the, um, all your bills the last four years. Picked out approximately what you had been, um, what you had been paying in capital improvements. Um. And then people's service also put together a capital improvement plan for what needs to be done out there. I think that was attached to the email as well. Water wise, they were looking at about twenty-two thousand dollars a year. Based on their estimates, what needs done and their estimated cost. Um sewer, they were at fifty-two thousand dollars a year. They had an item listed there for a maintenance shop, but did not include that in that fifty-two thousand dollars a year. I don't know if that's something that the county's considering doing out there. If it is, we would need to increase that um capital improvement fee in addition to include building a maintenance shop out there. So I guess, couple of questions. First of all, as far as the capital improvement fee goes, um twenty thousand, fifty-two thousand dollars per year. If everybody feels that's appropriate, it is more than you have been spending in capital improvements out there um for all the years that I looked at for the last forty years at least. But we do know there's some work that needs done with the wastewater plant. It's getting some age to it now. Pumps are starting to wear out, need to be replaced. So I do feel that that needs to be increased from what it was before. And then another item is, is something that we've always talked about. The mandatory connection, part of Iowa code. Holiday Inn Express is not connected out there, they're on their own system, I guess. Do we want to put a date in here when they're either gonna be required to connect or they're gonna have to pay the minimum fee regardless?
Sure they should, you know, those.
Do you give them a notice?
A notice.
I'd like, I just do put it right in here, give them a notice. That way it's clear. It's a year from now, if it's two years from now, whatever you wanna do is a board.
So they've known about it forever, so I wouldn't.
Well, it's new owners.
Six months, that's probably a question for get people.
It's a year and a half ago, new owners, but they've been made aware of it. Um that they need to.
To fish and disclose during the sale.
Correct, that's what I think, right.
I would assume.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
Well, social drainage and that never is.
It was, what was it? It was built in twenty-eleven, so they've been on their own system for thirteen years.
Avoiding the.
Fourteen. At the time they built it, there wasn't anything.
There wasn't available.
They couldn't connect at the time.
Yeah.
It isn't there. It hasn't been for several years.
But since the, uh, the new wastewater plant has been built, that's.
Been a while now.
Yeah, what was that?
I agree with you.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Uh fifteen, sixteen somewhere.
Yeah.
Somewhere in there. So yeah, they, I mean, they could have, what, they could have been on ever since that was built, so. I'd, I'd put it in there, I'll bring it to you. I'd say, I'll give them. Want to put a specific date?
I'd say July one of twenty-six.
Zoom here.
Yeah.
You give them more, sufficient time to line up.
And if they come in and say our contractor can't do it till August or September of the twenty-six, that's fine. As long as they've got it organized, I guess, you know, then they can, we know it's moving forward, they can buy a month or two.
You run it first to twenty-six.
They start giving roughly about fifteen years on their old system. So it wouldn't be money down the toilet for them.
Just make that a motion.
Uh, well, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to do, this is gonna be in the ordinance?
We're not, we're not approving the ordinance today.
Yeah.
Jeff will be, he's available this afternoon and then the rest of the week he sits. So procedurally.
Yep.
I'm gonna go through it with him, have him, have him review it.
Yep.
And we'll have to have a hearing on it.
Only we do to make a motion to add to, so it's official.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
That's fine, yeah.
That's what I would do. Then there's no question.
Yeah.
Otherwise I could say, well, you guys can just kind of, we're doing around it. I mean, that's my opinion, so I do.
But you'll approve it in the ordinance.
Correct. But then at least it's, I don't know, to me it's paper trail. Right, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to add the language for Northwood Hospitality to be included in the ordinance.
Is there a second?
For July first of twenty-six?
July six.
I'll second that.
Okay, move in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both in time.
So by July one of twenty twenty-six, even if they're not connected, they're gonna start paying.
Minimum.
Minimum month, so.
And that's the base rate, that'll be the base rate?
Correct, and that's, I, I added them to the tables. They weren't previously listed for the sewer charge, they're in there. So it's a matter of plugging in the percentage, which.
Will lower the other percentages.
Correct, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put that together, stamp a draft for purposes of discussion at the hearing so everybody can see how that's gonna impact them on Holiday Inn hookups as well. Which they do use quite a bit less water than the other hotel, significantly less. So it's not gonna be a huge impact, but it will be an impact somewhat. Other than that, I mean, the base rate is what it is based on the last three years. The percentage of system usage. There were some issues out there that we worked through as far as the metering goes. We've got that corrected now. Um commodity charge, like I said, that's just the electric bills that I use to calculate that, which looking at what your wastewater um was, a dollar seventy for thousand gallons. And I increased it to three seventy-five for thousand gallons and that's just to cover the electric bill on there.
Biggest jump I see is in the capital improvements on the wastewater.
It's huge, yeah.
It's huge.
So that's generating you fifty-two thousand dollars or fifty-five thousand dollars a year to pay the improvements out there.
It's the, it's the biggest expense of any community is wastewater right now.
You just need a long-term maintenance one or two, which we never had.
Yeah.
So is there any, is there any kind of cost of living increase into this going forward? Are we looking at renegotiating this every so many years or?
The way this is worded is that you update it every year.
Every year.
Based on the last three years.
Okay. So we could bait, I don't say it was a simple motion, but we. So we could make, I don't say it was a simple motion, could we, two or three percent, or, I mean, is there?
I think you ought to go off the cost of living on a yearly basis.
This is based off of actual costs, actual expenses.
After three years.
Add in that next year and drop the one off, you come up with a different one. This is based on, they use the last three years rolling average for metered water. But as far as the cost goes, I looked at the last three years and I took the most expensive year.
Which is good.
Is how, that's, that's the number I used. And I rounded it up just slightly, just for even numbers, so.
I just, I just don't wanna see it played aside again like it has been for so long.
In ordinances, people will develop in a three to five year increase right in their ordinance, so then, once the public hearing's through, they don't have to touch it again.
This is, this is difficult with so few users. That's why it's set up to be looked at annually.
Just as long as we have an avenue, that's, yeah, but the most important thing, I think, is.
Yeah, it needs to be looked at annually and just, if everything went well.
Oh, you're lucky to see an increase.
That's a little, you know, sticker shot, if you could say.
Yeah, I think we're gonna look at it annually with the hopes of having more.
Customers.
Customers available out there.
Cause that'll draw down other, the percentages from yours.
And eventually maybe even get to just a metered use, so you're paying for.
Did that other business, did they ever hook onto water?
I believe so. That'd be a people's question.
I'd better ask peoples, cause they need to add to this for water.
If they gotta put in there, if they got an water heater, put in there.
That's a people's question.
Oh, that is right.
Cause they wouldn't, they shouldn't have inspected that.
They're not billing.
What's that?
They're not billing for another one.
They're maybe not there yet, but if they're gonna be there soon, we just, we need to add it to it. And start off for water.
Yeah, for the water.
Forgot about them.
Now, if you review it yearly, does that mean you do a new ordinance every year, or you just have that set in, the ordinance that you're gonna review it every year?
You would have to update it because it's a change.
So we'd have to.
And I think, I think that's why a lot of people do like a three and five year plan, then they don't have to, public hearing, post it, all that.
If you have a hundred or two hundred users, it's a little easier when you have just.
I mean, if we did get more of them going forward, someone we could change.
It's gonna have, it's gonna have to change on an annual basis anyways, if you get more out there.
Oh, you stay on top.
Yep, for right now. Now the spreadsheets are set up, I mean, now it's.
And those, those expenses for that posting and all that can come out of that, those funds. It's part of your capital plan, that's part of your expenses out there.
So if we're good with these numbers. Like I say, the fifty-two thousand or fifty-five for the capital improvement plan is too much, we'll go down next year. I mean, that's kind of the way I look at that.
See where it plays out for a year and then if it needs to be adjusted, we can.
Try and make up for some of the, what, what you've been losing here for the last couple of years at least.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You have to look through.
I'll get Jeff to look through this. I'll talk to People Service on this additional user out there, we'll plug the date in. And then Jeff and I'll get a schedule when we're gonna do this procedurally. Have a hearing, three readings or wave a couple readings, however you wanna do it for the ordinance, so.
Perfect. All right, okay, thank you very much. Get that done. All right, building the grounds. You got more?
We got more, but it is nine o'clock, Mark.
Oh, all right, nine o'clock.
Yeah, five, you have a few minutes?
Yep.
So you got our public hearing on this budget amendment?
All right, for now, reset the regular meeting, I'll take the motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Rockwell, Wilbur.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
So, uh, public hearing is open for FY twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment. Resolution.
Okay, you guys have seen it. I, um. Put money in there for the capital projects, for the money that came in. Um, I put money, or I did expenditures for civil service, we've had to go a couple rounds with those, so, um. Your, and your budget is always usually pretty thin anyway, so I thought I'd just increase that since I was doing a budget amendment. County nurses, that's the opioid money that, um. We're switching over and they're using for that. Then there's some capital projects that I plugged in for the money that, that got brought in. Medical examiner, I probably didn't put enough in that, but we, we'll do another budget amendment. I'll just have to watch that one. Emergents and medical services, that's to do the seventy thousand dollar check that they lost and be done with it finally. And then court administration, there were, there was thirty-four hundred dollars that they wanted sent back to the state, so I got it in the budget so that we can pay it.
On the surplus, but give us money back.
I, you read what I read, so.
I read the email.
I don't know what to do about it. They want it back.
They have no choice.
Can they come after us? I don't know. I don't wanna find out really, so.
For the amount of money, it's not worth messing with.
Okay, is there any comment from the public? Everybody on Zoom? Okay, uh, hearing no comments. One more time, is there comments from the public? If not, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I will second that.
Okay, moving to second, I need further discussion. None, Rockwell, Wilbur.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
Maybe, aye. Motion to carry. All right, well now, resolution, twenty twenty-five oh eight, committee FY twenty-four, I'll take it. Motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment resolution.
I will second that.
For a discussion. All right. I'll do a Rockwell again, Wilbur.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
Maybe, aye. The resolution, we need to do that. Okay, thank you. All right, now, so Jason, back to you, I guess, sorry. And that's the second.
Last item. Request for proposal for a contract. Service provider, the water wastewater operators out at the casino. We missed a call here a while back about wanting to get going through this again. Current contract expires June thirtieth, twenty-five, based on what the records I have. Not gonna go through all this, very, very similar to last time. This will be the third time I've done it. Primarily just wanna touch on dates with you. So we're looking at, I'd like to send these out about March tenth, eleventh, a week or so from now. I have proposals due April thirteenth. And then we could bring them to a board meeting either the following Monday or, or two weeks later, depending on how much review we have to do. And then that would give us basically the month we made, have a contract in place, signed, executed. So if it's somebody different, um, July one, we've got a new, got a, a new contract in place, so. There's one item that I'm considering changing. There's some insurance requirements in here. For some environmental insurance, a yearly checkee. Environmental pollution liability policy, it says up to two million dollars. It's not a standard things that most communities and municipalities do. It's more of just the operator, um, this contract operators that do carry this. It's just about twenty thousand bucks a year for that insurance. So I'm gonna check to some more air, more people and see if that's, still needs to be included in there or not. I mean, if you get a fine because of a violation, it's gonna be a ten thousand dollar fine. So for paying twenty thousand dollars a year for insurance, is it, do we need to be? So I, I am gonna do a little more research on that, but that would be the biggest, the biggest change from what we've done in the past. Scheduleize, I'll work with everybody to get these out.
Sure, shouldn't.
We got the same list of operators, I don't know, there's eight or nine different operators we sent to last time, last two times. The last time we only received the ones that falls over. See if we can receive more this time.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Does this include the same billing that we have right now, that People Service does and they do all that stuff?
Unless you wanted to take it over and take some money.
No, I don't know. I do enough of this. Just keeping track of it is enough.
So let's, just a quick update on that, any questions?
Thank you. Looks good.
Yeah, should be fine.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. All right, thanks. All right, so, I don't build as gross, anything there, we already cut on that for today.
Uh, just, yeah, I forgot to mention, we did, the boiler was okay on the inspection.
Oh, good.
So he was, she was happy with where he was looking down there. And then we did get our heater fixed over here, replaced. Still waiting to hear back from Midwest on the roof issues. He didn't respond to me, but I just haven't seen a testament on anything yet, so they're, get something together. Other than that, you had something, Mark?
Yep, um, hey, we talked about those furnaces over there, what they built.
Did they come over?
They did.
Okay.
Yeah, ours just came over. We did get it figured out what runs, what areas and stuff like that. And the only, and it's been working good now, since we kind of figured out. The only issue was in, in that area where Hollings sits up in the front lobby area, reception. That's, um, well, in her area it is, and the reason is, is there's one duct in, in that little office area for hers. And they found that the, the duct work to that is crushed or collapsed or whatever. So that duct is basically non-operational. There are a couple of ducts closer to the front door that put a little bit of air, or heater air in there. The duct that has collapsed comes, is fed by the furnace that also feeds the, the back offices that they don't use, and then the two bathrooms that are in that. Like where the, the, uh. Conference room and exam room, that, that section of the building.
Okay.
And then, I'm sure it's because the configuration of that building was changed when it was remodeled. But there's the furnace, there's two furnaces downstairs in the middle basement. One furnace in the south basement, and then one furnace upstairs in the closet in the ELC. One of the furnaces downstairs in the basement runs the, the two vents in, in the lobby of the, um, Public Health. The exam room, the conference room, and then. The, the outlets in the south part of the ELC. The furnace that's in the ELC closet runs the ones that are in Veterans Affairs, my office, and the north half of the ELC. So, um. I shut the vents that were coming from that basement furnace in the ELC and just let it, because that don't need to be heated all the time anyway. And just let it run, let it heat with the one from the upstairs furnace in there. The ELC closet, the bathrooms, and those back offices that are spare, that they use for storage. And Hollings' office was supposed to be that room by the other basement one. She was trying to get more heat out of there, so she kept turning that furnace up, so that made the bathrooms, that little closet, and everything like, super hot, we couldn't figure out why, why that. So we turned it down, and she's got a, a little spare radiator heater in there for right now, just until we did that figure. But I thought, if we do decide to fix that, maybe pipe that outlet over to the one that comes from the, from the other basement furnace. Instead of running the spare offices, bathrooms up, just run it off them, cause those don't need to be kept that warm.
Right.
If you're gonna run it down, you gotta work in there, just pipe it off the ones that come from the front part of that lobby. Because the conference room, the exam room, and the front office will be kept warmer than the rest of the spare offices.
Yeah, so you gotta do some duct work.
I'm why it's.
Have them, schedule it with them, or if you.
And we haven't talked, other than just, that's what we're reporting.
We gotta fix that duct work.
Cause it's, it affects the way the AC's gonna work too, in the summer, you get smashed ductwork, so yeah.
At least it affects, so.
Can't take that one.
And it's smarter to reroute some of it. That's what we should do all our.
That little area, that lobby area is, if you look at the design of that building, it's like, cause it's, there's, it's offset here, and then there's that part, and it's like, they kind of put four different buildings together. And that little area is just kind of like a little breezeway between the Public Health side and the ELC side and stuff, but.
Yeah, if you wanna contact Larson's and just have them put it on schedule and do it.
Yeah.
Get it, uh.
Maybe just tag something off that. Cause it's not a big deal, that's why I said just tag. Maybe, maybe take it off of that south furnace even. Could make it more efficient, that's great. Cause that, that's not really running that much, I'm, you know, the south offices is all that's running.
Yeah, if they think that'll work, have them do it, it's on there. You got that?
I'll take care of it.
Perfect, thanks, Mark.
Yep.
That's the way you guys can do it, coordinate it, however, on less busy days or whatever, so.
I don't know if they have those over there, but. They figure out some days, yeah. Anything else on maintenance? Melissa on there?
I don't think I saw her coming.
I'm looking to find out if you're gone or not, if you remember. If not, all right, People, People Service, we took that last week. Supervisor Weekly, I guess.
Department head. Department head in discussion.
Perfect. I'm sorry, we have Department head discussion. Let's get by that, if they got any.
This week, we're gonna be replacing the, the hosts that run all the servers. The hardware is supposed to be here today, and somebody's gonna come up from HBS on Wednesday, so we should have that done by the end of this week. It shouldn't be visible to anybody, I just wanted you to know that's what we're doing, so.
All's quiet over there, Sheriff. Is that a good thing?
Nothing.
I got one question for you. Uh, did you ever get an officer?
No, not yet.
Nothing yet, okay. I know you had some candidates or whatever, but, okay. All right.
Okay, anybody, nothing else sent? All right, now, do Supervisor Weekly, excuse me.
I had North High Regional Housing Authority. And, uh. Went through the financials and all the bills and stuff on all the apartment complexes, and all the counties that are representative. And, uh. They discussed a little bit, possible changes on what, what happened in Washington as far as making everything more efficient, so. We may not have as much money, or we may have the same, we may have more, nobody knows, but it's kind of out there, so.
Who doesn't want to, cause they get, I think they rely on quite a little federal funding.
They rely on a lot of federal funding. So, and we kind of like those. You should have, you know, for your elderly and your low income, you should have some type of housing, quality housing available for them. So, something that we need to hang on to. Other than that, it was just all the budget meetings. You guys are in the same thing, huh?
Uh, one ordinance for, for care connections, um, agendas are getting thinner and thinner. Usually, right now, we're doing all contracts with providers and everything like that, updating all that stuff, but we no longer have to do that. So we're just kind of winding that down, figuring out a few assets that we do have to get that stuff sold off. And, um. Give a little incentive for the employees. So that they'll stick with us for the rest of the time, because they may or may not find a job and may or may not leave, but we still have to continue to operate until, until June thirtieth, so. Trying to incentivize them a little bit, just to stay. And they're, they don't even know if they'll get hired by a new company or not. So they're all technically kind of just planning that we were out of a job July first, unless something changes, but they won't hear nothing until probably May, on whether this.
These new companies are all working with the regions to establish them, or they just sitting back waiting until the day and we take over?
Well, so the new company that's overseeing the whole thing will be working with eight, the eight different districts now. And so CICS, which is like Cerro Gordo County and that stretch through the center, that's their region right now. They got, they ended up with three of the districts, District one, two, and eight, or something like that. So I think they have about forty-five counties that they will be operating, basically. So our, pretty much our region is gonna go from the six counties it was to about forty-five counties.
Oh, like involved in this?
Uh, no, nope, surprisingly, he's not.
Just checking.
So. So hopefully, I would like to say, there's, it's, this is like House File seven eighteen, there's so many what ifs, but it's moving forward. And so they're gonna find out the hard way, or it's all gonna be last minute.
Just as you go on the block, yeah.
Hopefully they hope.
That's what seven eighteen is.
Yeah, and that's what we're just hoping is, is with the employees, you know, the areas, everything's gonna stay the same, they're still. There's still people in those areas that need the services, you need the employees to make sure those people get the services. So hopefully, they can all, uh, obtain jobs when they're done, is what we're hoping, so.
So the district just got bigger.
Yeah, pretty much. And it's.
Quite a bit, yeah.
Way bigger than a silverback, when you look at it, or at least management.
Yeah, we were part of a twenty-two county region that did not go well. So now we're gonna be a part of a forty-five county area, so.
Even though it says it'll be, you know, it's different districts, but at the end of the day, it's all run by one.
Good, so. I hope it works, that's all, that's all we can do now. Other than that, we'll back add it in another couple of years.
Yeah.
All right, um, other than budget deals, I had, uh, Central Iowa German detention, um, just general stuff. We did have another closed session, of course, um. I guess I can't say much about that, but I kind of figured out what's going on down there. We got two people butting heads and legal fees are gonna be in excess of a hundred grand before they're done, which is stupid. Thankfully, I guess you can say Central Iowa can absorb that, but it's really kind of stupid because. And then we're, we're really there, I mean, we do a lot outside of taking care of the kids that are in detention. And, uh, which is getting tougher and tougher with state regulations and stuff anyway. But, uh, it's just kind of sad these two individuals can't get over their. Bumans syndrome, I guess that's what I'm gonna put right there. They're both butting heads over stupidity, this could easily, two lawyers could have sat down and done this for half of that. Just said, okay, yep, there was a mistake made, let's correct it, let's get going, move forward. So hopefully, we're still on a sixty-day stay, I'm basically doing anything, board elections, any of that stuff, but. Um, continue to move forward, hopefully in thirty days, there, there are some proposals put forward during the meeting. And, uh, so hopefully the lawyers can get together and realize this is stupid, so. Other than that, I had nothing. All right, appointment, eminent domain, anybody got the, uh, applications again?
Well, and that's.
That's different.
Yeah, I, I didn't get.
Oh, excuse me.
I didn't get planning on someone, yeah. But I gave you all the applications and I'll put it on next week.
You said you have somebody that ever got back to you, I suppose, right?
Yeah, he's on vacation, so I don't got to talk to him.
Has next week too, then.
Lucky, yeah.
Maybe, yeah, maybe.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, next week's agenda items, anything else need to be added to the list?
I believe so.
I don't think so. All right, nothing else, take a motion to adjourn?
So will.
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Moving to second, any further discussion? Harry Donalds, Craig say aye.
Aye.
All the same, so I'm motion will carry. Thank you, everyone.